Issues since 1995. Through 96 through 2016, we've adopted the school impact fee updates every year based on the capital facility plan that they provide us each year in the summer. Last year was a little different. There was a discount that the school district took. There's one that they have to take, but then they took the second, what we call the double discount, in order, they said, to sort of have a local match or a local share of the fee. And also, they were worried that builders, like the master builders, would start deciding not to build in Issaquah if the fees were too high. And that's how they explained it to us. And then the council met with them again, and then we ended up adopting them the way they wanted them last year. And then, but council chose to meet with them again to say, "We're really a little worried about the double discount, and can we talk about that?" And so this year, when the district fees, the capital plan came forward, the discount is less than the discount from the previous year. It went from 70% last year that they asked for in the double discount to just 60% this year. So they're going in favor of the way that council had asked them to go. And this is a breakdown, a comparison of the 70% discount from last year to the 60% discount that they're asking for this year in the proposal. And again, this is right out of your agenda bill. And then to compare, what we usually do every year, too, is compare last year's fees and how much they've gone up or down since the previous year. And as you can see, single-family went up over 70%, and multifamily went up over 25%. So there's some increase this year. Other jurisdictions, we were asked to look at what other jurisdictions do. All of the Issaquah School District fee, peer cities have adopted just the way they have been proposed. And that was last year. This year, no one is working on them yet. You just have to have them done by December to be in effect January of the next year. And the jurisdictions that we talked to had not started working on them yet. The city of North Bend is the only one that we could find that had changed the fee. They changed the cottage housing fee. A lot of the builders, according to the planner, were trying to build them as cottage housing because the fee was less. It was the same as the lower multifamily fee. So the city of North Bend put a square footage requirement that it had to be a smaller unit to get the smaller multifamily fee. So that was not the way that the school district had proposed it. So the city of North Bend went out on their own on that one. On the other side of the scale, the city of Kent actually put a cap on their fees because they were worried that the fees were going up too high and would scare away development. So that's another, so that was different than their federal way school district had proposed the fee. So our district, in summary, our district hasn't been changing much from what the district has requested, but other districts nearby have chosen to go a different way. Options for you tonight, and this is again right out of the agenda bill. You can choose not to amend and leave it as the 2018 levels. You can approve what the district has requested and then continue to work with the district on understanding the double discount and how they see that in the midst of all their funding sources. Or if you chose to, you could seek adoption of the higher fee, either taking away the double discount or having a certain portion of it that would be collected from the developers. But if you do that, it would require a code amendment from the IMC that would have to be done. And then we would bring everything back to you all before December. I think 17th is your last meeting of the year in order for the new fees to be approved and in effect in January. And that's it. Questions?
Thank you. The double discount, I understand the first, or I understand the 70%, and I think that's the one that's most focused on, 70% now 60%. That's the one that's focused on here. Can you explain the first part of the double discount?
The first part, the state says that even though you have, development has a requirement to pay for their growth, you can't have impact fees pay for the whole 100%. So all of our, all the impact fees from the state, that the state allows us to take, they have to be less than 100% of what the actual cost is. So our transportation impact fees, our park impact fees, and fire, they all have to be a little bit less than 100% of the impact. And so that's what the first discount is that the school takes, is the one that's by the state. And the second one they do is to sort of mellow out the highness of the fee so that the development community won't be unhappy. I don't know what the right word is. So they won't not build here.
And the first part of that fee, the first part of the discount, that isn't reflected in the calculations that are in the packet, too?
Yes, they're in...
Which page is the first discount?
Page 15 of Exhibit A, I believe. The top says school impact fee calculations.
15 of the packet?
It's, I just have it printed by itself, so it's 15 of Exhibit A.
It looks like this?
I got it, I got it, yeah.
And it would be in the bottom middle where they first take the, they reduce the fee.
Is that the state match credit?
Let's see. Site permanent, temporary state. I thought, well, I haven't looked at, I just looked at the local share part. Trying to remember where the first discount is.
Yeah, I saw that.
Can I ask a question a little bit differently?
Sure.
I mean, so maybe you could explain, though, what the state match credit is and what the tax payment credits are, because those are the things that start to take away from...
Right, and that, the school district would have to explain those. Those are their own, I'm not sure how to explain those. And I'm not sure if they're explained even in the document. I know they talk about some of the fees they receive, but I'm not sure that they talk about how...
So, want to ask another question? Okay. I think that, I'm not sure that you are the best person to be asking this, but I'm going to ask because you're at the microphone. So there's also a table with examples of the different parts of the city that they're using, different building developments that they're using to calculate the student rates for different buildings. And I wondered if you know how they select, what their methodology is for selecting those.
No, I don't. Keith, do you know?
No.
Okay.
I just have one question. Do you know what the total, and this, again, may be a better school district question than you, so Trish, thanks for standing up at the microphone. Do you know what the total dollar value is of the discounting? I mean, are we talking, you know, $1,000 over a year? Are we talking $1 million? What the total value of this discount is to the...
Right, well, on page, on one of the pages, they say how much they believe they would get from school impact fees, and I think it's between the school impact fees and the local share, it's, I think, $500,000 over the six years. And so if you added, if you did the high-level math and multiplied that by 60, the 60% that's, that it's down, and granted, in the scheme of that they have a $5.3 million bond that's also going to build facilities, the impact fee is a very small portion of their budget. But certainly 60% of it, if you added the 60% back in, I don't know the exact, because they're just saying they would get, the impact fee portion would be, I thought on the last table, it's like 500,000.
Page 14.
Page, oh, thank you. Yes, thank you, Teresa. It says, "Per the formula in the adopted school impact fee ordinance, half of the unfunded growth-related need is assigned to impact fees and half the local share." And that's the, that's the 500,000. The district anticipates it will receive 500,000 in impact fees. So if 500,000 is mitigation, is our impact fees, and then the 500,000 is the, that the double discount part, which would be the local share...
So it's 800,000 total?
Sure, that works for me.
Percent of 800,000 is 480. I'm just rounding it.
Right.
Ms. Maribertis?
Thanks so much for the presentation. Was there, and I might have missed it, but the move from the 70% to the 60%, was there an explanation given along with...
They said they were trying to more meet the council's expectations of lessening the discount from the discussion that we had last year with them. And so it was their...
Were there numbers that went along with that, or they just, that was kind of a blanket statement?
I think they just chose a different discount number to show they were making progress.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Maribertis, anything else from you?
One more question. So in the presentation, there was a, this, this looks like the change for single-family and multifamily are both discounted 60%. Can you go back to the slide where it had different rate of change, which I think was in the overall fee?
This one, right.
Okay, so this one has an increase of 74.3% for single-family and 27% for multifamily. But then, so that's an increase in the rate, and then they discount the same amount for both. So they increase different amounts and they discount the same for both, is that right?
Right, because single-family is, the formula is different. On page 15, the formulas are different for single-family and multifamily based on how many kids are in the units and how much, how expensive it is for elementary schools versus, so the whole, there's two different formulas that go into the single-family and the multifamily, but they're both discounted at the end 60% this year.
Okay, and so this increase, though, this is the, at the end, after doing all those formulas, from last year to this year, it's a 74% increase for single-family rate and 27% for multifamily rate.
Yes.
Okay, I just did some fast math here. And I'm kind of disappointed that no one from the school district is here, because these are really questions that they need to be responding to. But if I take $500,000 and I divide it by $22,000, which is the single-family impact fee, that's 22 units. So I'm going to guess that, and you probably have a better sense than me, we will build more than 22 units in the city of Issaquah in the next six years.
Yes, I think we will.
So there's something wrong with their numbers.
Okay.
I mean, it was a simple division problem, and I pulled up a spreadsheet because I didn't want to have a zero problem.
Right, right.
But it is, it's, the 22,000, or yeah, 22,000, it's 22.7 units.
Right.
And so, so I think that there's some, there's some flaws in the logic, in the math there. Someone check my math for me? It's really quick, but I think it works for me.
Keith, are you checking the math? How many single-family houses does it take to hit the 500,000 for impact fees?
It takes 23. I just redid it.
Oh, okay.
So, anyway, so, so there's, there's, there's a couple of questions here I think we need to get answered, and I think we need the school district to respond.
Do you do 500,000 divided by 15?
I did it by 22.
It's a single-family 15? It's 33, but yes.
Okay, well, look at that. Now, we're all the way up to 33 homes we'll have to build in the next six years. So it's five a year.
And no multifamily.
And no multifamily. So there's, there's something wrong with that. Where did I get 22? Anyway, oh, I know where I got it, the local share was 22. So I just blew it. So anyway, it's, so it's 30-some. So we know if anybody from the school district's going to join us this evening?
We were told that Steve Crawford was going to be here.
So, go ahead.
So now I'm confused with the, so you said 22 is the local share, but this, I thought, was the proposed total amount, proposed school impact fee per unit, 15,000, not 22.
Correct.
So...
Oh, I think he's going back to the...
The total impact was 30.
Before the discount?
Yeah, and the discount is 22, and I just grabbed the wrong number for my math. So I have a couple of suggestions to you. One is we can, we can take a recess for five minutes and see if anybody from the school district shows up, and then ask the questions. And if not, we'll adjourn this to our next meeting. Because I don't see how we can make a reasonable recommendation for moving forward without them. Thoughts?
Do you have a phone number for Steve?
I do have my desk. I don't know if anyone has still in the building.
Okay, I didn't know if you had a, like a cell number.
So, I would, so that, just to give a little bit of background here, I sat on services and safety last year when a lot of these questions came up. And, and a lot of what you see in the memo on the back of the package came directly from that council meeting, I'm sorry, that services meeting. And then we met with the school board a few different times to come in and get an explanation for the discount. But with everything that we, that we did have go on with impact fees, that seemed to make sense that someone from the school district would be here to answer the questions. And also, I guess I would say if we, if we do, if we go with your idea to postpone also just even like numbers around our calculation to, to talk about where, how they got from 70 to 60% and, and a little bit of an explanation with that would, would also be helpful in addition to what, what you're talking about. Ms. Maribertis?
I'll just add that I have some outstanding questions about their methodology for the Table 3 and Table 2, which is where they're calculating the rates of students for the houses and how they selected the developments that they have and their, overall their methodology for that. So that's not a question, I understand that's not a question that, that we're going to probably be able to have answered without school district input. So I'm fine with adjourning if that's the way forward. I think I might also like to just make some comments about information I would like after we adjourn, if we don't have representative come forward.
We can recess for a few minutes if you want to give them a little bit of, a little bit of time to see if they just got stuck in the horrible front-street traffic. You want to do that?
I'm fine with that.
All right, so we're going to recess for five minutes. We'll reconvene at 7, 6:55, and then go from there.[1132.58] Okay, Services and Safety Committee is back in session. We are going to take public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Welcome back. Welcome back.
I haven't been here for a long time, thank goodness. Okay, so, I sat, I sat through last year's Services and Safety.
Okay, sorry. Who are you?
Actually, you don't do that at committee meetings.
You can.
We can, though. My name's Connie Marsh, but we don't do that at committee meetings most of the time. The, I went to Services and Safety last year for these meetings, and the directions that are being given to take this year sound suspiciously the same as the directions for last year. And I thought that the conclusion of last year's meeting was that this year that we were going to, to have a different outcome from the beginning, and that there would have been conversations with the school board and the school district as a whole about what to do with this before we got to this conversation. And so I was at a school board meeting not too long ago, and one of the board members said, oh yeah, the individual municipalities can do whatever they want to with the impact fees, and we have no problem with that. And last year, at the Services and Safety meetings, Steve Crawford was, was saying, absolutely not, federal way raised their impact fee rates, and now all of the developers are all over the place and going to Olympia and fuming because of these changes. So we, I don't think we can just erase all that we heard off of the board, and we need to start with, yes, some districts have raised it. The school board, at least one of the board members thinks it's okay to raise the impact fees. And so then the question is, what is the right thing to do for your community, and who do you need to talk to to understand what that is? So school board, community builders, right? Those seem to be at least three of the component parts that you need to talk to. When you look at their raises in rates, you'll see they really, they really increased their single-family housing. But if you ask us, how many single-family homes are we actually going to build this year in Issaquah? 10? How many multifamily homes are we going to build this year in Issaquah? Way more than that. So that's a very, a small increase. It looks really big because of the multifamily hit, but most of the people who are going to be coming into town are going to be the ones in the multifamily housing. So I think you're missing several pieces to this puzzle, and so I would kick it back not just be to the school district, but I would kick it back to the Development Services Department and the administration to say, what were the conclusions of the meetings that we had with the school board and district about what to do with these impact fees? Because I don't think you're getting that information. Okay, so, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Oops. I hit a button.
Anybody else from the public like to talk about impact fees?
He's gay. Let him go unimpeded. Can I scare you and go in this way?
My name is Joe Werner. I live at 1230 Oakwood Place Northwest on the Newport Way Northwest Corridor. And I came in late to this meeting, so I'm going to ask a question, and maybe you can all answer it at some point during this meeting. And the question was, if you have a fee schedule, why are you discounting it? If you have zoning regulations, why do you give variances, left, right, and center, to the developers? If you got a fee, charge the fee. Otherwise, don't have fees. That's all I have to say about that, says Forrest Gump.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else?
My name's Corey Christiansen. I'd like to echo Joe's comments about the fees. I think the first discount that the state requires is reasonable, maybe reasonable. I actually think development ought to pay their absolute full share. I think the second discount ought to be zero. That's because we don't get a discount on our property tax. Now, of course, I can already hear some people in staff, not the staff here per se, echoing, well, property tax and, and impact fees are two different things, but maybe they really aren't in some ways because, or at least as far as the council goes, giving discounts, I should say. But you retune, retune, I can't say, routinely, routinely, thank you. Give discounts every time you give affordable housing because you're, they're not paying either property taxes or impact fees for that. And now the new thing you're considering for the transit-oriented development, this multifamily tax exemption grants both no property taxes and no impact fees to all the full-price units. Now, the affordable housing, I think that's reasonable in many cases, but I don't like this multifamily tax exemption because I think the full-price units need to be paying their full share, just like the rest of development needs to be paying its full share. So the idea that we're going to have this second discount, I disagree with it. I also think that it, that looking forward, I think we have a, we have an impending school crisis, because when you think about it, what does the school district tell people, taxpayers like myself, property owners, every time there's a school bond? They basically shame us into voting for the bond because it's for the children. Now, my, my question is, we're the developers. Shouldn't they be, be saying, we want to pay the full amount for the children, especially given when they build their new houses and their large multifamilies that are packed with children, that they're the ones that are actually creating the impacts on, on the schools? They're the ones that ought to be paying for brand-new schools ahead so that it is for the children that they're bringing here. And so that's the, and when we look at the 2016 property tax levy, the school district got $534 million from us, and they got almost 71% of the vote. Last year's levy had three parts. One part barely passed at 50%. The other two passed in the mid-50s, meaning if those had been school bonds, they would have failed. So now the question is, why are they failing? One, probably demographic differences, more people living in apartments. Two, people are fed up with the school district, people, kids in portables, kids put on buses for an hour, and the only way that they can hopefully have some kind of change in the school district is to not vote for the children. So one of my points with this, this discount is I think it needs to end so that the council shows clearly that you are for the children, not for development, not for other things first, that the children get the money. One of the things in the, in the information package about the school district saying that they have not been collecting a large percentage of their money from this, it's because they haven't. For many years, the multifamily number had been like $1,000, and they had routinely been underestimating the true amount of children that have been living in those apartments. So there's been a secondary sort of triple discount, if, if you may, on these impact fees. So it's time those impact fees be brought up to what they should be, and we move forward and we build great schools for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Corey. Ed Nevin?
I promised I wasn't going to speak tonight, so I just wanted to let you know I did get Steve Crawford from Issaquah School District on his cellphone. He sends his apologies. He messed up his calendar, and this did not get on his calendar. So his apologies, he understands that you're going to have to schedule this for another meeting, and he will be more than happy to make an appearance next time, so, for whatever that's worth, that's my message.
Thanks, Keith. All right, so any comments, observations from committee? Councilmember Hunt?
Okay. So firstly, there are a number of calculations that they do. They select some different developments to use as examples. They calculate the number of students that are expected from those developments, and they ultimately come to a figure, and then after those calculations, they then discount. That's my understanding. And I think that if they are, so firstly, I do have some questions about how they're selecting those developments. I think we have seen in our city that there are more multifamily, more families moving into these multifamily houses. We also expect a lot of growth in that housing sector in the near future relative to single-family, as has been pointed out. And since families are multi, are moving into the multifamily, you do see in, for example, the Highlands, those, those higher number of students that are in the multifamily housing. And firstly, I think that we, we need to make sure that the actual calculations are really reflecting what we expect to be the growth in our student population so that we can best serve this growing student population over time. And then, that's the original calculations, and the 60% discount, I, as far as I understand, I think that the fee is to help pay for school services that are based on expected growth, and so it's calculated that way, and I do not understand, or at this point, agree with the motivation for discounting it. So if we have the school district come and give their explanation, that would be helpful, but in the packet and from the explanations I've heard, it doesn't resonate with me. So I think that if we know that we have, as, as is documented in our packet, if we know that there are schools that are over capacity, there's a need for funding for more portables, there's a need for new facilities, there is the school district going out for other sources of funding, looking for other sites, et cetera, and this is the impact fee, and we're being asked to assess it on council, I think that the discount, I, I don't understand the rationale for the discount, and I would suggest that we then consider some of the alternatives, which are drafting an ordinance that would let us actually change it. It says to set a higher impact fee, I would, I would phrase that more as reducing the discount or negating the discount. That's my thoughts.
Any comments?
So after having, again, questions that came out of Services and Safety, and then, you know, memos that, that were written to, to give an overview of that, and then sitting down with the school district last year and, and talking through this issue, there, there was quite a lot that came out of that meeting, and a lot of information that came from the school district. And so I, I, I sort of feel that the two of you being newer to council, that, that we really don't have all of that information in front of us, and it makes it difficult to, to go forward. So I think it's really reasonable to, because we don't have the school district here to answer questions, we've got specific questions that, that we've talked about, and I just wanted to make sure that we have all of that documented, any specific questions that we have, so that could go back both to the administration and the school district, and then we could talk about it at another meeting. Thank you.
So I agree completely, and, and we can't take this forward without having a discussion with the school board. So I think the only thing to do is to reschedule this to our next meeting and drive to the conclusion of some of these questions we have on the table, because I think they're very valid. So with that, I think we'll adjourn today's meeting. The next Services and Safety meeting will be September 11th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. We have an extremely full agenda on that meeting, and so we are very likely to have a second Services and Safeties Committee meeting in September, which is tentatively going to be scheduled for September 18th at 6:30 here in council chambers. And with that, we're adjourned.